So we have one, two, three. Okay, we have five numbers.
I thought you were trying not to abstain today.
And with that, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Ms. Voe, will you do me a favor and call roll?
Sure thing, Madam Chair. Priya Batra?
Present.
Robert Byrd?
Present.
Alma Cortez?
Present.
Abigail Marquez?
Present.
Summer McBride? Marcella Ramirez?
Here.
Carol Segala?
Here.
Winnie Wechsler? Deanne Tilton Durfee? Jaclyn Murkowski? Frank Ramos?
Here.
And Holly Mitchell?
Present.
Coram is present.
Thank you. Ms. Voe, you've got an announcement?
I do. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners and members of the public. As our Board Chair mentioned, I do have a quick announcement for today. Today's board meeting will include a live Spanish interpreter for participants joining via Zoom. And if you'd like to use this option for today, simply click on the interpretation button at the bottom of your Zoom window, choosing Spanish as your option, and you will be taken into another room that will provide translation of this meeting in Spanish. In addition, today's meeting will also include closed captioning in Spanish for virtual attendees as well. Simply click on the closed captioning button below your Zoom window, choosing English as your speaking language and Spanish as your translated language, and that will give you the translation for the closed captioning in Spanish. We have also included detailed instructions on how to do this via the chat for all the access during the meeting. And with that, I'll hand this meeting back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. That's a wonderful addition. Appreciate hearing it. Moving on to my favorite, AB 2449. For this meeting, we received a request from Commissioner Cortez to join virtually pursuant to AB 2449 just cause due to being ill. Mr. Cortez, please confirm that you're joining virtually pursuant to AB 2449's just cause due to being ill.
I can confirm.
Oh, poor thing. I'm sorry. Just nod. Can you also confirm that you've not joined board meetings under AB 2449 more than twice in this calendar year? Okay, for the record, I saw her nodding. Yes. And finally, can you confirm that there are no individuals under 18 there with you? Nodding, thumbs up. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, colleagues, to the consent items. Can we open it up for public comment on our consent agenda?
Confirming there are no public comments on our consent agenda.
Wonderful. Is there anybody that wants to discuss or pull anything off of consent before I call for a roll call for the consent agenda? Seeing none, could you please call?
I just want to make a note, Commissioner Ramirez will be recusing herself and abstaining from this vote, so she's going to step away for just a moment.
Got it. We'll give you time to step away.
Thank you so much.
All the sign language, counsel. Get me right. Thank you. All right, Commissioner Ramirez has left the room. Let's go ahead and please call roll to approve the consent agenda.
Priya Batra?
I approve.
Robert Byrd?
Yes.
Alma Cortez?
Yes.
Abigail Marquez?
Yes.
Summer McBride? Marcella, excuse me, Carol Segala?
Yes.
Winnie Wechsler?
Yes.
And Holly Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to remarks by the Commission Chair. I think that's still me. Is that still me, Harlan?
Definitely.
It's still me. I'm still here, still standing, as the song says. So first of all, happy Women's History Month to one and all. This board itself has been led by a series of powerhouse women leaders, including our current leader. So to all the women who help keep First Five running, we pay tribute to you and thank you. Next, on a personal point of privilege, I wanted to acknowledge Brandon Nichols, who's not here, and his team at DCFS for the work they've done on a motion I brought before the board called the Blind Removal Pilot Program. And it focuses on the disproportionality of Black children in our foster care system. It's a number that we've talked about in this context here quite often. And this past Friday, I had the opportunity to participate and speak at UCLA's Pritzker Center event where Dr. Howard spoke on the harms that come from separating Black children from their families. They have done a report on the pilot thus far. It was a great gathering. A number of folks here attended. And I appreciated really having that frank, that space to hear the results, to have the students from the Pritzker Center there looking at our next generation of advocates and having the conversation as we have about disproportionality, the role implicit bias plays into the ongoing cycle of hurt in terms of vulnerable families. And so I appreciate it, being able to have that opportunity and hope that we can continue to have those kinds of conversations. I was just mentioning to Commissioner Ramos, there was a LA Times op-ed this week, maybe Monday. My days kind of run together sometimes, maybe Monday, that talked about disproportionality. And I was concerned because it didn't reference some of the things that are actually happening here in LA County. So you know me, I wrote a letter to the editor that talked about some of the work that's being done. My colleagues, Supervisor Horvath's effort around mandated supporters, the blind removal, all the work that's being done. So cross your fingers that the LA Times publishes the letter, because I just felt compelled to acknowledge that there is work being done. And we're working very hard to certainly not continue to ignore that issue. You've heard a couple times now a new name in our mist, so I'd like to introduce to everyone Dr. Priya Batra with LA County Department of Public Health. And in 2022, since 2022, she's served as the Deputy Director of the Department's Health Promotion Bureau. Prior to joining the Department of Public Health, she worked for several years in medical managed care leadership for the Inland Empire Health Plan. And she has a background in health services research and is an adjunct physician policy researcher with the Rand Corporation. So thank you very much for joining us. Would you like to offer a few remarks?
Thank you so much. It's really an honor to be part of this commission. Huge fan, longtime fan. And so really looking forward to working with you all. All this work really aligns with public health and the work in our bureau, so really happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, this is the cool kids commission, so we welcome you. You've got to be cool to be on this commission, just saying.
Yes.
That's right.
In the minutes, recognize the cool.
Say it again.
Recognized in the minutes.
That's right. Fabulous. Any questions any Commissioners have of me before we hear from the real report from our director? Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Yes.
I just wanted, if I may, go back to the event Friday that you were at. I know that Carlo was there and others. And I appreciate your comments, because LA County is progressive in terms of the efforts to pursue equality, to impact in a positive way disproportionality. And a lot of times what people see is the negative that occurs, which is not the norm in many circumstances, in every area, I think, of society. And so I just wanted to just underscore and thank you for what you shared, because I will tell you, I wear a different hat as well, DCFS, and our executive team is fully focused on ensuring that we do our part and that we take part in various opportunities and to create opportunities. Because there's more than one way, right?
Absolutely.
To impact implicit bias and other things. And you have allowed for a lot of that to happen because of your support, so I just wanted to, and I'm sure I'm saying this on behalf of the director too.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yeah, it is but one tool in the toolkit that you all are utilizing every day, and so I appreciate that. All right, with that, let's move on to the Executive Director's remarks.
Thank you so much, Chair. Welcome to our March meeting, First Five LA staff, members of the public, and of course, our esteemed board. I'd like to echo the sentiments being shared about the Friday event and really, really thank the Chair, DCFS partners, and of course, the UCLA Pritzker Center, of which Commissioner Wechsler has a lot of background. But for folks that weren't at the event, the discussion was about the experience of Black families with government systems. And the conversation really focused on the importance of moving from data and the acknowledgement that structural racism exists to action. And what was really compelling about it, and what our Chair reminded all attendees, is that whenever government touches systems and needs to leave, touches families and needs to leave families better off than when it initially started. And everyone in the audience really agreed with that, but it's statements like that and really turning them into action for which we're really grateful for, Chair. And the most important, and one of the places where we find a lot of alignment here at First Five LA, is the possibility of what our systems can actually mean and do for our families and being really, really explicit about these conversations. Really, really tremendous. And a plug for reading the report that's coming out from UCLA. I'm happy to post some of that later. I also want to acknowledge Women's History Month and Gender Equality Month, which really serves as a month to celebrate the history, contributions, and wellness of community members who are impacted by gender-based bias and oppression. And this month in particular, as we celebrate National Women's Month, the theme is really compelling. The national theme is women who advocate for equity, diversity, and inclusion. And as I think about that theme and I think about gender equality and who sits at this table, this theme is about the work we have all been doing for decades, about making sure that we're building a better future for the families and children that we serve. And it particularly reminds me of the First Five LA vision for all children, worth repeating. You will hear it over and over again. You all took this on. And it is the idea that every child in Los Angeles County will have a future in which they are born healthy and thrive in nurturing, safe, and loving communities. And we are really, really clear that the way we're going to do that as a commission, as First Five LA, are by focusing on three goals. And I love the goals that the commission adopted, because we recognize that it starts with basic needs and making sure that every child has the safe foundation, nurturing relationships and environments, of which some of the Friday work reminded us of, and a solid foundation for well-being, learning, and success. And to me, what that means is we know that every child will have a safety net, because we all need someone to catch us at some point. We all do. And making sure that our families in Los Angeles have that for children zero to five, and that we don't stop at just surviving, but that we're looking at children thriving. And that's what this board has committed to. So as we transition to our new strategic plan, the 2429 strategic plan does not roll off nicely, off the tongue. You reminded us of that. We are on two parallel tracks for the board, and you'll hear some of this today. The first is that in May and June of this year, the board will get a programmatic budget that is aligned to the previous strategic plan, 2020 to 2028. And the reason for that is that we want to ensure that our partners have a glide path and do not all of a sudden see changes in funding as we're looking to transition. So alignment to the previous strategic plan with funding for this year. And then the second parallel track, which you will hear more about today, is we are developing new tactics to align to the new strategic plan. So today you will hear from Chrissy and Rigo later on today in regards to how we're building out the new tactics. And you will also hear from our First Five LA Director, Tara Fitzick, and our remarkable Department of Public Health partners on the learning of our current early intervention work that will inform tactics. So Madam Chair, I am really looking forward to today's conversation, and I will turn it back to you.
Thank you. Just before we open it up for public comment, I'm going to try to send Ms. Voe a picture. At some point, I'm going to ask that she try to put it up on the screen. And it hit me when you talked about keeping children safe. I don't think I told it to this group. I'm turning it to my father. I'm repeating stories. But I mentioned it Friday about a town hall that I convened on street takeovers. And we had a couple hundred people at Magic Johnson Park, and there was a young woman there with a very young infant. And I noticed, A, because I'm just, you know, it's the crystal stairs in me. I see the infant. I find my way there. But she was at a table. We were about to transition to a tabletop exercise, and she was at a table by herself. So I went to the table and said, oh, well, can I join you? And, you know, and, oh, and the baby, da-da-da. And she looked at me and said, you could hold her if you want to. And she said it was such, I don't know, it was something in the way she said it. And I said, I will. Do you have some hand sanitizer? See, I said, can I put this blanket on the floor? Yes. And she said, because I'm feeling frustrated. And I said, I got you. I said, you want to participate? She said, yes. So I said, well, stay at one of these back tables in case I get in trouble. She went to the table in front of the room. But she sat facing me, so she had, we had eye contact. And I'm going to see you, and so then she said, you know, and if she could just, I just, I can't wait for her to walk. And I'm like, take it from me, don't rush that. Why do you want her to walk? She said, because then I could wear on, I could tie her on. I said, I'm going to tire her out for you. I'm going to show you what floor time can do with an infant. And this six-month-old, for 90 minutes, Summer, walked up me, behind me, and me trying to save my earrings and my glasses and my locks and my necklace. And for 90 minutes, this six-month-old, her legs never buckled. She was so strong. For 90 minutes, I worked her out. She's probably still asleep. But what it said to me is all of us have the opportunity, you never know, to be in a space, to pay attention, and for the community to be there for her, to catch her. The fact that she got to the town hall, wanted to participate, she just needed that extra little bit so she could. So when you said, you know, safety, separate from our, when we gather here and the work, the policy work we do, we all have an opportunity to see somebody, step in, and needless to say, it was the best 90 minutes of my entire week. So I'm going to share the picture, because it is hilarious, me on the floor doing floor time on the blanket. And you can see the room filled with people who are, you know, doing tabletop work with the baby right there in the community. But they were good, the mom was good, and she was good, too. So we all have a role to play, and we can step up and make it work. Yes. So with that, public comment on the Executive Director's report, please.
Confirming that there are no public comments on the Executive Director's report. And also for the record, I wanted to confirm there are no public comments on the remarks of the Commission Chair. And for the record, I think what we're hearing from you, Madam Chair, is that you're a great alternative for ECE, like childcare. You're welcome.
Might help if I turn that on. Let's move on to Agenda Item Six, which is an update on the Revised Records Management Policy and Records Retention Schedule. We're going to hear from Sarita and Dana.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Thank you very much for your time today. Everyone hear me okay? Okay. I'm Dana Schacter, the Records and Enterprise Content Management Specialist here at First Five LA. And I'm in the IT department, but I work closely with all of the centers and departments throughout First Five on records and information management projects. I'm going to provide you with an overview today of our new Records Retention Schedule and related policy, how we developed it, and why. This revision has been planned for several years, but was put on hold due to changing priorities during the pandemic. Once it's approved, it will be the basis for many behind-the-scenes projects that the IT team has planned for the next five years. For anyone who is unaware of the term, a Records Retention Schedule is a policy that defines the types of records that we use here at First Five LA, our legal requirements regarding how they are managed, how long they are retained, and how we dispose of them. On this slide, I'm going to go over some of the benefits of a retention schedule and policy. A well-defined Records Retention Schedule and policy is essential for ensuring that First Five LA operates transparently, efficiently, and in accordance with the law. Other benefits include cost savings. We spend a lot less money on record storage, staff efficiency, less time spent searching for information and replying to public records requests, enhanced data security, accessibility to current and relevant information for decision-making, and reduced liability. Failure to comply can result in fines, legal consequences, and may harm our organizational reputation. I'll now give you a history of the process that we went through to reach this point with our proposed schedule. The foundation of our work was based on the existing Records Retention Schedule and policies. A year ago, the IT team contracted with Diane Gladwell, a consultant with over 25 years' experience in California with records retention at state, county, city, and local government levels. We then collaborated with all centers, offices, and teams to learn what kind of records they create and how they are used during normal business operations. Once our drafts were finalized, they were then reviewed by legal counsel and the senior leadership team and socialized with the leadership team. We now present them to you today as an information item, and then in May, we will ask for approval. We will begin implementation in July. Here's an example of our current retention schedule. A retention schedule should be reviewed every two to three years to ensure it is compliant with changing laws, regulations, and standards. Our current schedule was developed and approved in 2018 and has not been reviewed since. It was built around a now obsolete organizational structure. And as you can see in the screenshot, many record series just said "to be determined." The schedule was laid out in a manner that was confusing to staff with footnotes and cross-references resulting in inconsistencies and contradictions in retention periods. Here are screenshots of our new schedule. Our new schedule overcomes the challenges faced in the old schedule. It is based on business functions such as finance and contract management, and record types such as meeting minutes, publications, and reports. Many of the records we now manage now fall under an agency-wide schedule and are managed by the center or department that uses them. These are examples from the Finance and Agency-Wide Records Series. For each record type, there is an Office of Record, a unique ID number, a description, the total retention period, and the legal citation and/or notes. I'd like to highlight some of the differences between our current policy and the proposed policy. We currently have two records policies that were last reviewed in 2018. The Electronic Storage of Records Policy and the Records Retention and Destruction Policy. There are redundancies and contradictions between the two, making them difficult for staff to comply with. Technology, standards, and best practices have changed since 2018, especially concerning digital records. Our proposed policy has combined the two older ones, making the policy more comprehensive and easier to follow. It also has been updated regarding disposition, legal holds, training, and responsibilities. This is our annual process flow for reviewing and disposing of records following the retention schedule and policy. While we updated the schedule and policy, we paused in this process, but we will start it again beginning this July. In July, I create reports of the eligible digital and physical records in our electronic content management system and our off-site storage facility. In the past, I only worked with our Contracts Department, Finance, and HR, because those were the only departments that had a complete retention schedule. These departments then have six months to review the reports I provide them and remove any records that are not eligible. Our legal counsel then reviews and approves the reports, sometimes identifying more records to remove. During this time, our President and CEO are also kept informed of the progress. We then present to the Board of Commissioners for approval to destroy eligible records. Some of you may have already gone through this phase with us. I then spend the remainder of the fiscal year ensuring that all approved records are destroyed or deleted. Sorry. This coming review cycle, I will again work only with Contracts, Finance, and HR. However, during this time, I will also begin to work with other departments that have never participated in this review cycle in the past. Our goal is to develop processes for each center and department to ensure they're complying with our retention schedule and policy by incorporating good records management processes into their work routines. Eventually, all departments will take part in the annual records disposition review. I would like to emphasize that not all First Five LA records become eligible for destruction. Here are some examples of our permanent records. As-built drawings, blueprints, and survey maps. Annual financial reports. Historically significant records. Board materials such as action summaries, agenda packets, minutes, bylaws, and resolutions. Real estate deeds, permits, and reports. For next steps, in May, we will be bringing this retention schedule and policy to you as an item for your approval. Once approved, we will implement the schedule and policy. As mentioned before, we have several long-term behind-the-scenes projects lined up. But a couple of our short-term goals, as I mentioned earlier, will be to renew the records disposition review process. Also, before the end of this calendar year, I will roll out an annual training for everyone at First Five LA that will cover records management basics, such as what is a record, records retention, public records, our legal requirements, and how to determine whether or not a document or an email is a record. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Great job. Can I ask a question?
Of course.
I think this is great. As a representative from a government agency, I know how big of a task this is. And I think it's very clearly outlined. The one recommendation I would also make to the training that you just outlined is what we found when we did this process is to train staff on how to access records. Because I think we assume that, especially as you're doing everything electronically, a component of that. A lot of our staff needed that refresher, and I don't know the dynamics of the team, but that is something that we found. We had developed this wonderful new system with all of these records that were now streamlined, and people didn't know how to access them. And so I think that should be incorporated in the training. Would be a recommendation is what we found.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Also, on the front end of the training, making sure people are keeping the right thing, because I think we err on the side of keeping more than we really are required to when you're unsure, then you just keep it. So really making sure, because my, you know, flashback to my crystal stairs days was my annual budget. was my annual budget for storage of all the documents that we were required to keep. Astronomical. So really making sure people are keeping the right thing and that they can access it. I agree. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. I believe we will open up for public comment on this agenda item.
Confirming there are no public comments on this agenda item.
Thank you. This was for our informational purposes, and such will be the orders. Moving on to Agenda Item 7. This is a written-only item, but staff will be providing some brief comments on this item before we take action. Hang on a second. Where am I? Did I skip? Right here? And we're going to hear from staff. This is early identification and intervention. Help Me Grow L.A. pursues major shifts to maximize community outreach. We're going to have a presentation, and then we will be taking our break about halfway through this item. And joining us today, Tara Fissick. Help me.
Fissick. Very close, though.
Thank you. Director Health Systems, IC Steve Baldwin, Director Children's Health Outreach Initiative, Division of Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Promotion Bureau, LA County Department of Public Health. And will Melissa be joining?
Melissa will be joining.
Okay. And Dr. Melissa Franklin, Division of Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Program, Bureau, LA County Department of Public Health. Welcome.
Thank you. And I know we are running a little bit ahead of schedule, but yes, Melissa will be coming. Her part is after the break, so... But good afternoon, Commissioners, First Five LA staff, members of the public. Today, we are eager to present on Help Me Grow L.A., which has served as our primary strategy for the last seven years, focused on strengthening early identification and intervention for children with or at risk for developmental delays. This work has been led in partnership with LA County Department of Public Health. So as the supervisor noted, joining us today are Dr. Melissa Franklin and Steve Baldwin from Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Division. This is a very robust and comprehensive presentation. As noted, it requires its own intermission. So we are in sync with Hollywood. What the average feature film is like two and a half hours now. This is not a two and a half hours presentation, but we are running close to an hour. We will offer a break, but it'll just give you more time to think about all the amazing work we're presenting on. So we have three primary objectives for our time together. First, we want to provide more background on Help Me Grow L.A., noting its history. And while we have presented on Help Me Grow consistently through the years, I know we have a number of new commissioners, so wanted to ensure we provide a more thorough summary, given this may be the first time some of you are hearing this information. Second, we are going to share the latest data, including key learnings and where we see effort signaling early impact. We will also acknowledge sustainability opportunities. Please note that there are multiple sustainability updates within the presentation. That's because sustainability was addressed project by project versus an overarching sustainability approach for Help Me Grow as a whole. And finally, we're going to speak to shifts underway and on the horizon, given programmatic adjustments that maximize community reach and further center parent voice and leadership throughout our work. We will close with offering insight into learning that can further inform First Five LA as we move into tactic development and strategic plan implementation. So we often start with the data slide to reflect the scope of the problem we're looking at to solve with Help Me Grow, starting with the stat on the upper left that reflects one in six children will have one or more developmental delays or disabilities, just to get a sense of the prevalence in the larger population. However, the effort needed to identify our children with a developmental delay early and connect them to intervention is lacking. As you can see, in California, holding a rank of 31st, which means only 34.4% of children are screened at the right time. And when we say "right time," that means early for us, and that's before age three. Recommended screenings are at nine months, 18 months, and 30 months. As we do a deeper dive into the data, we see children of color have less access, which is largely due to systemic racism. That creates additional barriers for families to utilize services and supports. This all results in our children getting connected at a much later age. Kindergarten, first, second, third grade is not uncommon. And given that, we know we've lost out on a critical window of time when early intervention could have been maximized, resulting in better educational and health outcomes for our kids. And just one thing I have to note here, we did a dig on the data before the presentation, and sadly, California has now fallen to 49th, and that means 25.2% of our children are only receiving timely developmental screenings. This is 2020 to 2022, a difference just in two years, largely influenced by the pandemic, but it clearly signals a situation that has gone from bad to worse. And so keep that in mind, how we're doing as a state as we move through the remainder of the presentation. So how are we going to solve this problem? Taking a systems approach, we committed to implementing a national model framework called Help Me Grow here in LA County. Help Me Grow works to promote cross-sector collaboration, largely working across health and early learning, to strengthen early screening of developmental delays and ensure connection to needed intervention. We launched a year-long countywide planning process back in 2017, which resulted in staggered implementation of several multi-year projects that started in '28 through 2022, with many still in operation today. And while the work is cross-sector, we have prioritized the healthcare system, given their role, their responsibility, and their early access to families in the prenatal-to-three time period. If you think, for those of you who are parents, how many times you went to the doctor with a little one up until 15 months? I think it's six times for a set appointment. So healthcare system has early and consistent access to families. Additionally, policy changes over the last several years have reinforced healthcare as the lead system in ensuring early screening and linkage to services. This work is only successful when we collaborate, and we realized that from the onset. LA County Department of Public Health stepped up to co-lead Help Me Grow, LA Care, regional centers, community-based organizations, and parents are also important collaborators, and supported the work from its early planning days. So the Help Me Grow model is explained here in more detail. As you can see, there are four core components, noted on the visual on the left and described in more detail on the right. The four core components are centralized access point, family and community engagement, child health provider outreach, and data collection and analysis. Starting with the centralized access point, or CAP, which we often refer to it as its acronym, this functions as a portal for families and providers to access needed information, resources, and services. Steve's going to talk a lot about it in a minute. Ongoing engagement with families and community is a priority to support their child's development while prioritizing healthcare, as I mentioned, and child healthcare providers to better identify and connect families to resources. And then lastly, data is important, right? So it is collected and analyzed throughout all areas to track progress, to measure success, and to identify gaps and support continuous improvement. Each of these components, as you can see, are interconnected, informing and influencing each other. For example, our work targeting child health providers to strengthen screening protocols within their clinic could be further enhanced through the centralized access point, which would offer additional support and guidance for a family beyond what the provider or clinic could offer. So as we implemented Help Me Grow L.A., the four core components really came to life through a set of activities, projects, partnerships that could best fulfill that overarching purpose of strengthening early identification and intervention in LA County. The CAP is now a website and a call line, staffed by family partners, which are parents with lived experience. Our family and community engagement work consists of an advisory council comprised of system leaders and parents, as well as our Help Me Grow L.A. pathways work, which is focused on regional collaboratives working to improve referrals and linkage to services. Our partnership with LA Care focused on select clinic sites to increase developmental screening, as well as provider and community education and engagement. And lastly, our data collection and analysis efforts, which is happening throughout all Help Me Grow L.A. projects, and we have two discrete evaluations for our LA Care and for our pathways work. So a number of important milestones have occurred. As I mentioned at the beginning, this work has been in place for the last seven years. And as we stood up this body of work with an extensive countywide planning process in that first year, followed by that staggered launch noted earlier through years two and seven, and as you can see, the various projects I mentioned earlier, such as Help Me Grow L.A. pathways beginning in 2020, LA Care starting in 2021. And everything noted here, we're going to go into a lot more detail in subsequent slides. All right. So for this next section, we want to pivot to spotlight the tremendous amount of learning that has occurred through the years and call your attention to efforts that signal Help Me Grow L.A.'s early impact. We've organized this learning by the core components, and we'll conclude with overarching lessons to offer a more comprehensive view. We'd like to start with the centralized access point, or CAP, as I mentioned, and I'm going to hand it to Steve Baldwin to do that.
Thank you, Tara. Good morning, Commissioners and Supervisor Mitchell. Good afternoon, I mean. Good to see everybody. Well, let me begin by giving a little more detail about the Help Me Grow model and specifically about the centralized access point. So Help Me Grow was designed by Help Me Grow National to be implemented at the state level. And many Help Me Grow systems that exist across the county are indeed implemented statewide. However, in California, we're a little bit unique in that we're so large, that each county implements their own Help Me Grow system. And that works just fine, because Help Me Grow was designed to be very flexible in implementation so that it can be implemented based on the needs of each jurisdiction. And there's an adage that goes, "Once you've seen one Help Me Grow, you've seen one Help Me Grow." They all look very different. So placing Help Me Grow model in a jurisdiction like Los Angeles works, because you can customize the model. And that's important for us, of course, in Los Angeles, because a key opportunity faced by every countywide program is figuring out how best to connect with families in their local communities in a county with 4,000 square miles and almost 10 million people and half a million children age zero to five. So in the case of Help Me Grow L.A., to better support families and given the size of our vast county, last year, we transitioned to a more local approach in which the program is led by, as Tara mentioned, family partners who are assigned to work in their home communities. Our family partners offer the parents and caregivers that come to us for help emotional and practical support by providing health and social system navigation. A prerequisite to becoming a family partner is to have lived experience as the parent of a child or youth with special healthcare needs. And all of our staff are parents whose cultural backgrounds reflect the diversity of the communities in which they serve. And this helps them provide high-quality, culturally congruent, and affirming services to Help Me Grow families. So family partners are co-located in wellness teams within the public health centers in each service planning area. The wellness community teams have spent years building trust in and around the communities that they are charged with serving. This regional coordination of services allows our family partners to create linkages for families that are accessible and real. Our family partners are also charged with identifying and working with coalitions in their assigned areas to advocate for improvements in the systems and for the families that they serve and that the families that they work with must navigate. So I want to share just an example of this that one of our family partners shared with me recently. Our family partner's name is Nadine, and she works in SPA 2, way up in North LA County. And Nadine shared with me that a grandmother called the Help Me Grow L.A. phone line concerned about her grandson and his speech delay and the fact that the grandson had some eating issues. And she just wanted to make sure that he was getting all the services that were available to him. So eventually, Nadine also spoke with the mother and discovered that, through a series of conversations, the child was originally a regional center client, but the family had become overwhelmed with work and life and being busy, like we all do. And the family had stopped receiving services, and now that the child was older, wasn't sure how to plug back into the system. And so over the next several weeks, Nadine was able to do some amazing things with this family. She was able to confirm first that the school district was able to provide ongoing speech support services for the child, confirmed the school district's IEP appointment, confirmed that Grandma, Mom, and Dad were all involved in planning the child's care. She arranged for a home visiting referral for Mom, which it turns out Mom needed one of those too. And she coached Mom and Dad on how to talk to the pediatrician about the child's eating issues. Nadine's takeaway was that it was truly a village. It takes a village to raise a child, and that she related to me that because so much trust had been built, that she would be there as long as they need me, was her quote. And, you know, in talking with our family partners and with Nadine, it's their lived experience and compassion that, in this case and in so many other cases, helped inform the conversations that led to a successful outcome for this family. Nadine knows, as do all of our family partners, how to lock arms with the families that they're serving in order to get them the services that they need. So stories are great, but it's also wonderful to look at the data. We're public health, and so we love data. So I wanted to show you who exactly are we serving with the Help Me Grow centralized access point? So first, between the day we launched, which was May 17, 2022, and the end of January of this year, there were 875 unique client records created in our database. So that represents all the caregivers, parents, kids, providers that reached out to us for questions, simple calls, if someone just called to ask for a phone number, or some simple information like that, anonymous callers, clients that filled out a form on the website that we called back, any client we worked with, 875. So on the left, we have the race ethnicity of a sample of those 875, and you can see that most self-identify as Hispanic or Latino at 63%, followed by Black or African-American at 9%. And then on the right, we pulled a different sample from the 875 served to highlight the concerns parents shared with us, with our family partners. And as you can see, speech, language, and communication was more than a third of the concerns shared at 36%, followed by autism or autism spectrum, and then mental health or behavior concerns. So we get a wide range of calls, some very quick questions that we refer to as simple calls, navigation calls that include full intake, providing resources and referrals, and other calls from providers of all types, including medical providers, ECE providers, childcare. And parents report a wide variety of calls to us in different ways, and they require different types of referrals. So in this slide, of all the referrals made, you can see on the left, a little over half, about 54%, were made to regional centers. And so that leaves the other 46% to non-regional center partners, including family resource centers or family empowerment centers, home visiting, law centers, medical, excuse me, mental health, or school districts for general needs and special education. And then we conduct follow-up with families four weeks after our initial call, and about 53% of the families we connected with on follow-up reported having either received services already or that they were scheduled to receive one. And so we feel that's a pretty good measure of quality in terms of the strength of referrals made. So that 53% is represented as a combination of the two center bars on the right side graph. The top bar on the right, that's referred but no service, at 39%, may be a result of the high number of referrals to the regional center. the high number of referrals to the regional center that, and that the regional center has about 60 working days to, after their initial intake, to provide a service. So had we waited a little bit longer than our 30 days to follow up, that 39% might be a little bit lower because we would have had more success by then, having the client receive services. So that's another goal, something that we're considering in the future, adding another follow-up call at another, a month after a second follow-up call. Another goal for future data is to deep a little dig, deeper, dig a little deeper, excuse me, into each of the primary referral types to see where clients are landing in terms of getting connected or pending service or not receiving service. And then just to circle back to the family partners on this, I think these data really show the value of the family partners and also that, that of the the parents that serve on our advisory council and our health equity work group that you'll hear a little bit about later, the value of having someone, again, locking arms with parents to show them access, how to access the services that their children's, that their children need. Okay, so just a few additional learnings that I wanted to share, more on the practical side, less data here. And then I just wanted to talk a little bit about sustainability for the centralized access point. So first off, the regional center, Family Resource Center service locator, it's a simple online tool that allows the user to enter a physical address in L.A. County, any physical address in L.A. County, to identify the assigned regional center and family resource center to that address. And it's a seemingly simple task that requires multiple backend database cross-referencing and pings. It took a while to get it right, but our tool does it all in the background, all automatically. It's hyper-accurate, and it's fast. It's very easy to use. You can go to our website, which is HelpMeGrowLA.org, click Resources, and use our service selector. It's great. Also, materials translation. In partnership with First Five L.A. and L.A. Care, we were able to translate a key parent education tool, the Milestone Tracker, into all of the threshold languages in L.A. County, and all of those are also available on our website at HelpMeGrowL.A.org. And then we've got a great opportunity to conduct some evaluation with the centralized access point. Late last year, DPH applied and was accepted to, as a partner, in the Center for Disease Control and Harvard School of Public Health Program Evaluation Practicum. So DPH epidemiologists and program staff have worked with CDC staff and Harvard graduate students to develop an evaluation plan for the Help Me Grow L.A. CAP centralized access point. And the draft plan is currently under review by the CDC with planned implementation later this fiscal year. So just to talk a little bit about sustainability, and then I'll hand it back to Tara. So in the near term or short term, we're seeking funding to continue work through foundations and philanthropy. We're also investigating leveraging support from internal programs in DPH, including partnerships with AIM, that's our African-American Infant Maternal Mortality Project, and ENRICH, which is another, we love our acronyms in public health. It's our early needs response for infant and child health program. Both are key partners in this work. We're excited, in the coming year, in '24, '25, to partner with both the Office of Child Protection and Pritzker to help support the centralized access point, again, next fiscal year. Longer term, we're investigating a process of CHW, Community Health Worker Reimbursement through Medi-Cal, starting with training certification for our family partner team, while continuing to identify long-term grant opportunities, including those from state and federal sources that might help sustain the work of Help Me Grow L.A., for example, from the Department of Developmental Services, Department of Healthcare Services, at the state level, National Institute of Health, and CDC. So I'll hand it back to Tara to continue.
All right. Well, thank you, Steve, keeping us moving through the core components. We're going to next step into child health provider outreach. And given our focus on healthcare delivery and the early continuous engagement and touchpoints healthcare providers have with young families, L.A. Care was an obvious partner from the beginning. L.A. Care is the largest Medi-Cal managed care plan in L.A. County. It provides health insurance for a majority of children, prenatal to age five. And like DPH, they raised their hand early in the planning stage and shared their commitment to this issue and saw an opportunity for improvement. Our work with L.A. Care has focused on integrating early identification and intervention protocols into clinic sites and increasing awareness and education on the part of healthcare providers as well as families and caregivers. The work was launched in 2021, and it will conclude at the end of this calendar year, 2024. We are working with six clinics that cover over 30 sites for this project. Some learnings regarding screening are that participating practices have found success modifying their workflows to increase and improve screening practices. This has included parents and caregivers with the options, included giving parents and caregivers the option to complete the screen over the phone prior to appointments or in person, as well as ensuring that all clinic staff are aware of screening protocols. The main barriers encountered for practices are related to completing the screening questionnaire due to language barriers between parents and providers, reluctance of caregivers in completing it, and the amount of paperwork and tasks expected during a well-child visit. And as shared on the slide, for the practices in Cohort One, the number of developmental screenings have increased by 300% between baseline and cycle one, and then screenings increased by an additional 67% between cycle one and cycle two. For children ages zero to five, the total percentage of eligible children who were screened was 48% of practices participating. This is compared to the average screening rate of only 18% in L.A. County in 2020, which is reported by health plans to the state. So we're seeing a lot of progress in the clinics we've targeted through the L.A. Care partnership. On the referral side, for some practices, we learned data collection was non-existent with, so we put a heavy focus on coaching in its final year of the project to improve data collection around referral and linkage. The average number of days between the date of referral and the date of follow-up, it's 25, is approximately 25 days more for referrals to regional centers versus non-regional centers. Factors that contribute to making successful referrals to regional centers include support from L.A. Care coaches, assigning a dedicated staff member to oversee and establishing a specific workflow. Communication and relationships with regional centers are key to ensuring that effective handoff, and data from L.A. Care project aligned with our CAP data, which reflects for those families referred to regional centers, long wait periods are a common experience. And then lastly, for the child development classes that are a part of this project, we are, they all, they all take place at L.A. Care's community resource centers, and nearly all, 97% of the 222 parents surveyed responded that their knowledge of child development and comfort in advocating for their children improved due to the classes. Discussions are underway regarding sustainability between L.A. Care and First Five L.A., so we can think about how this pilot effort can continue and potentially be scaled beyond these initial sites. So that reflects our work in the child healthcare provider space. Moving now through our family and community engagement. Our work in community and family engagement has largely been served by our Help Me Grow L.A. Pathways. I know many of you hear pathways and you think of the Resource and Referral Agency here in L.A. County. That's not this. The, the name of the project is Help Me Grow Pathways because it was really focused on strengthening referral pathways between collaboratives. So Help Me Grow Pathways is a three-year project which seeks, as I mentioned, to strengthen regional referral pathways and provider networks at the local level through innovative technology, infrastructure, and practice change strategies. Seven regional grants were awarded to the regions shown on this slide to align with the Department of Developmental Services Regional Center catchment areas. Each region was tasked with building and maintaining a collaborative of partners which implemented their own locally tailored approaches to strengthening referral pathways. Five of these regions started in October 2020 and just completed their work this last December and are done. The two remaining regions began in July '22 and will complete in July, in June of '25. One of the unique aspects of Pathways is that it was designed as an innovation project, which grantees able, with grantees being able to design and select their own approaches. As a result, we saw grantees select a variety of strategies, including technology, but also outreach to medical providers or other specific communities, formalizing partnerships, developing shared language and workflows with partners, and much more. Moving into learnings and early impact, Pathways has helped to build a more connected early identification and intervention referral network. The initial five grantees chose to adopt electronic referral or intake portals. And while the implementation timelines of these portals varied by grantee, we saw that across regions, the number of partners using these portals grew substantially over the course of the project, from 40 in year two to 124 by year three. Speaking, which speaks to a more connected and robust service network for families of children with developmental delays and disabilities. A primary goal of Pathways was to improve communication and tracking of referrals with the idea that this will help families from falling through the cracks and to reduce wait time for services. While in most cases, this was for referring agencies, some grantees also built in ways for families to more easily track their own service referral status, providing a valuable tool for families to track their child's services and advocate when necessary. Through the Pathways Project, we saw grantees move from outdated referral methods, paper, phone, sad to say, fax, it still exists, you guys, and email, to electronic referral methods that provide not only streamlined referrals, but also are easier access to data and reporting. And at the same time, the Pathways Project's regional collaborative model helps strengthen communication among partners through consistent planning meetings and, in many cases, formal agreements such as MOUs and data sharing agreements. By year three, 69% of collaboratives partners surveyed reporting, reported that submitting and tracking referrals is easy. Specifically for DDS regional centers, we have heard anecdotally that shifting to electronic intake portals is saving staff time and is easier for both staff and families to use. Critical part of this success is due to design processes that heavily emphasized input from end users, including both families and intake staff. Further learning and early impact from Pathways also shows up in successful referrals. Of course, improved communication is great, but it's really only meaningful if it translates into a successful referral, where families are receiving the services that they need. To assess this question, grantees surveyed parents following referrals to ask whether they were able to access the assistance they were seeking. As of year three, 79% answered yes to this question. Strengthening data capacity. One unintended benefit of Pathways is that many agencies have strengthened their data capacity in key areas. Not only do electronic portals typically make data collection easier, but grantees also built methods to gather input from key stakeholders, such as parents, caregivers, and partner organizations. Grantees were also asked to submit data for key outcomes disaggregated by race, ethnicity, age, home language, and zip code. Analyzing these data provided insights about gaps in access where additional or more customized outreach could be beneficial. Inclusion of community. In addition to integrating community members into some Pathways collaboratives and involving parents with lived experience in the selection process of the Pathways grantees, grantees also reported that the Pathways investment made it possible to engage community more deeply in the development of electronic referral systems. And then moving to close with sustainability, Pathways funding was always intended to be transitional, limited term, seed funding for grantees to launch their own approaches for strengthening referrals, and then sustained through other funding mechanisms over the long term. One of the great takeaways is that at the end of the projects, a majority of the grantees intend to continue their approaches after project completion. For referral intake portals, regional center-led collaboratives primarily used First Five L.A. funds to build out their portals and have folded ongoing maintenance costs into regional center budgets. For CBO-led collaboratives, many chose portals with free or low-cost options and are pursuing grants and other funding sources to, to continue to support the work long term. And additionally, most grantees intend to continue their collaborative partnerships, either through ongoing meetings or maintaining agreements with individual organizations. And so we've presented now on the kind of multiple Help Me Grow L.A. projects, and in this slide, we are illustrating the overarching total children and individuals served, as well as total number of referrals and screenings conducted. And while Help Me Grow is not considered a direct service program, its primary purpose was focused on system coordination and connection to help families navigate existing service networks. I also know it can be helpful and informative to kind of take a look at how many children were served and families served through this, as well as how many screenings and total We have made it to the break. Thank you all for listening. I'm going to hand it back to you, Madam Chair, to give guidance on timing and when we can next convene.
Thank you very much. Any, before we go to break, any questions on the first part, because if you're like me by the time we come back, you may not remember me well. Any questions you'd like to pose to the presenters now before we break? Yes.
Thank you for this information. I actually have a couple of questions, but I'll keep it brief. With the one in six on the very first slide, the one in six that are diagnosed, do you have any idea, and it's always hard to measure a negative, but the students or the children who go undiagnosed by the time they are in school and there are teachers and counselors that are starting to know things, notice that, you know, there is a challenge and it relates back to maybe some kind of disability or delay? Do you have any idea of the, the numbers of babies and toddlers that go undiagnosed?
I don't off the top of my head. The one in six, though, is, you know, the number of children in the general population that will have one or more developmental delays or disability. So it's getting a sense that, how does it, this isn't probably the, like naturally, how, what's the number of children we're looking at across the general population? And the concern is, I don't think this directly answers your question, but if we're only doing that early screening for, you know, a small percentage of the kids, we're not catching it, right? We're not identifying it until much later, to your point, because it has gone unaddressed when the kids are much older and they're more in a more, in a more set system of care, like a school district, and it's at a much advanced, much later advanced age. So we've missed out on early intervention. But we do have data of percentage of children that are participating in special education, and so we look at that with the expectation that that's decreasing over time because we're identifying children earlier.
Okay.
So that may get a little bit at your question if...
Yeah, it does. And I think part of the challenge, just from what I see being in schools a few times a week, we have a lot of students who, even in fourth or fifth grade, have still not received a diagnosis. And a lot of them are students who are labeled as the ones with the behavioral issues. And really, they're just misunderstood and frustrated because their developmental, their skills in language, for example, you know, they can't communicate. And so on the sustainability slide, you talked about what, like, the regional centers have done to adapt or build this into their budget. Do you have any idea what, you know, county offices of education or LEAs are doing to adjust? Like, the story that you shared about Nadine, it was great. If it wasn't for Nadine being that conduit, that family might have not known what services were available. And we know that right now, schools are struggling with their, you know, next three years budgeting. But what changes, if any, do we see in public education to, especially with younger children entering TK?
We don't have as much information on kind of the educational side. We have focused heavily on healthcare, largely because healthcare system and providers have earlier access to families. And there's a lot of requirements and incentives and even fines that are now being implemented or coming, are soon to be implemented when they don't provide the developmental screening before age three. So our focus has been on healthcare, early learning, and early education. I mean, like, early head start, head start, there, there's a mandate, there's required developmental screening as part of participating in those programs. screening as part of participating in those programs. State preschool, I think, has it as well. But again, I mean, many, probably some members of the board may have more information of those of you that are in early education, to what extent that is reinforced or there are requirements, it's monitored, and there are consequences if it isn't done. I don't know as much as I know about the healthcare system.
Okay, I really appreciate that. Now, just one more thought is, maybe if it's not already happening, this information can be provided as a PD for, you know, district leaders to know before these children arrive at their sites to be educated, for them to kind of have an understanding. Because I do feel like there's sometimes a big disconnect between, you know, TK through 12 educators and early childhood educators. And so maybe some ways, first five LA can bridge that gap and really lean into the educating of district leaders so that they know this is what you can look for, this is what you can be prepared for.
Uh huh.
But thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, no, great presentation, also from public health. So just to respond to that, we have our Office for the Advancement of Early Care and Education in our department. So we're working to create this connection in the education sector, recognizing that you need to get to the health system first, to your point, right? We're not, we're missing folks there. And then just a comment on like lifting up this family-partner model. So we have a statistic, which I know well from Help Me Grow, from our LA County Health survey in 2018, that the average parent of a child with a special healthcare need spends 14 hours a week on average, like coordinating services and care. So like, that is, and you know, obviously, it can't work, like it's really all-consuming. And so the Nadine level of service is quite expert. And I think a challenge as far as sustainability with community health worker benefits is it's like, it doesn't cover that level of intensive care that's needed. So we really need to think through that on the sustainability piece, too, because we are really working with experts in this field.
Thank you. Oh, I have, I have, you know what? I'm so glad you have questions, but I know that we actually, oh, we're good, we're good? Thank you. All right, I'll go here and then here.
I was just gonna, thank you, Madam Chair. I was just gonna add that there's also a stigma. And, you know, a lot of parents are in denial initially. And I can speak from my own experience, I have a daughter with ADHD, and my husband has a behavioral therapy, you know, degree. And I think that the public school system does catch these things. But I also think that a lot of parents, especially parents who are immigrants, who are, there's just a lot of stigma and they don't know how to recognize. And so I think that that part of the, like the education component has to be really built in. And I heard you talk about like there's fines, but before getting to that point, I think we have to just give parents a lot of grace because they just don't know oftentimes. And they're not accessing healthcare as often as we would want them to. And so, yes, absolutely, building a lot of interventions, a lot of touch points is important. But I agree with what was said, there is a gap between the healthcare system, the early ed system, the public school system. And for me, my daughter was in private school initially, and those resources are also less available, at least in my case. And so parents have different pathways, too, in terms of how they're raising their children. So I think it's a very complicated, you know, problem because I think it's also vastly underreported, I would say, to your question about like how many are undiagnosed. I think there's so many more children that are undiagnosed and are struggling and are labeled, you know, as having behavioral issues. So just wanted to lift up that piece, that, you know, I think that there is that stigma and parents just don't know, and we just need to figure out a better way. And I'm interested in the next piece about like how you're engaging other community organizations to bring that awareness to parents, especially in caregivers.
Thank you.
Commissioner.
So I just wanted to add that at the County Office of Education, there is professional development that is offered for school districts. We are the grant, we receive grants to do this work, to provide professional development for our early learners that have special needs. And so this is ongoing work. Of course, there's more to do, but of course, and then also our Head Start program, there are requirements for all of this, which is a model for the rest of the state.
Just appreciate that. Yes, Commissioner Bird.
So I think this also provides an opportunity for some advocacy. The fact that regional centers have 60 days to respond from referral seems jarring to me. When you're dealing with maybe the first child, parents who may not have any understanding what's happening, I think that, you know, as we're looking at our new strategic plan, like, this feels like an opportunity for advocacy. On the behavioral health, the health plan side, we have access to care deadlines, right? There's expectations. I feel like maybe we could share that love with our regional center partners.
Commissioner Wessler.
Yeah, thank you for this report. For me, it's a lot of new information. And I was stuck like at the very first few sentences when you were talking about how poorly California performs vis-à-vis the rest of the country. And I just wonder if there are some, you know, high-level takeaways that you could share with us as to why that might be. You know, we see that often for education outcomes, and we can sometimes, you know, interpret why that is, because of taxing and that's tax structure and all that. I mean, is it, is it a funding issue? Is it a priority issue? Is it other social issues that may be affecting our state more than others? Or is it hard to generalize?
How much time do you have? I'm like, I have a response for Commissioner Marquez. But okay, let me get back to that. Someone mentioned it earlier, it is complicated. There's, as with anything, a myriad of reasons of why we are where we are. I mean, the number one or the continuing reasons we hear are cost and time, largely in the healthcare space, right, in a well-baby, well-child visit. But there's been changes that have been working to address that. So there's now an incentive payment. When we started Help Me Grow, it was expected, you know, the developmental screening happens in the doctor's visit. And a lot of comments were providers, we don't get paid additional for that, right? We have a capitated rate here in California, and most kids are served through managed care plans. So we get the rate regardless of providing that service, and we don't have anything additional. We're trying to fit in many services and activities and supports within a very limited amount of time. So time and money kept coming up over and over again. Now there's an incentive payment of $59 for each developmental screening provided. That's been in place for several years now. It's actually now been moved away from a Prop 56 funding and limited to that to it's in the general fund. So progress has been made on, you now have a payment source for that. Have we seen any improvements? No, we haven't. So there's little things chipping away at it, but, I mean, overarching, and I'm trying not to look at Dr. Botry, who could probably do this in her sleep, but it is related to how we've structured healthcare and the payment system that we have set in place that largely reinforces where our performance is at. I mean, I will say, not, there are no states that are doing a phenomenal job at this. Like, we just looked at the data, like when 50% of kids getting screened are the top performers. So if you, and we're doing 25%. So it's like, nobody's doing a phenomenal job, but we're definitely struggling. And it's getting worse, getting worse, highly impacted by the pandemic. There was an LA Times article several weeks ago about kids aren't going to the doctor, and why is that? And there's a lot of reasons, right? The access is a big issue, the ability to take time off, to navigate transportation to get to the doctor, to find a provider that's culturally congruent to your family and meeting your needs, a lot of reasons, right? So you can see why we needed a comprehensive approach, and you can see the number of projects and activities and partnerships that were in an effort to get to this. And in many ways, you guys are ahead of the game because you're already getting into overarching learnings, which is going to be in the second half. That was a little bit of a teaser. But to the point earlier about stigma, yes, we see and know and understand that as well. And so a lot of the work with LA Care and with Department of Public Health was about getting information out, normalizing, right? Developmental screening should happen at every well-child, well-baby visit. It's just an ongoing, expected part of your experience with your provider. All children need support to develop according to, you know, milestones and to enhance their optimal development. And so a lot of those parent classes and community events, we're trying to get at, let's normalize the whole concept of, you know, screenings and development, and child development among the community. So we're working at that as well. And the fines are for managed care plans, just to make that clear, if that was not clear earlier. And that wasn't also something that existed several years ago. There wasn't a quality measure for managed care plans tied to developmental screening. So if you did it or if you didn't, oh, well. But now there is. Now there's a quality measure that Department of Healthcare Services is tracking now, and the measurement year was last year. Now they're going to be looking at performance across all the managed care plans, and ultimately fines will be implemented for those not meeting those quality measures.
Yes, you'll be the last one, Commissioner, then we'll take our break.
Are all the referrals to Help Me Grow from parents? Is that where all of the referrals must emanate from?
They can come from parents or providers.
Providers.
Or community members, yes, it's an open.
And how, how young can the child be?
All ages.
So I'm thinking of a postnatal issue here and an identification of problems that could be ameliorated.
Oh, for sure.
By Help Me Grow.
Yes.
And then what is Help Me Grow's role going to be after the funding runs out?
We are going to get into that in the second part of what kind of elements or areas are continuing and other areas to think about what opportunities are there through tactic development to continue to build on this work that's been in place.
Okay, again, I always focus on that early, early time, as soon as possible.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering what, what we might do to focus in on that.
Yep, prenatally, there's an association, right, with maternal depression and children's development. So we haven't done a ton of focus prenatally, but it's another area we could, we could definitely move in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, let's take our 10 minutes, and we'll be back at 3:05.
And while commissioners are breaking, I just wanted to put a picture of our baby whisperer up. And for all your future childcare needs, you know where to reach her. She's right here every second Thursday of the month. [laughter][156.81]
And ultimately, we're on the selection panel for these key projects. Parent and Community Champions have been a source of accountability through their participation in our data and evaluation work group, ensuring that the way we measure success for Help Me Grow L.A. is actually relevant to families. In our efforts to intentionally center community voice and experience, we continue to learn what it takes to create a supportive environment for participation. Key supports include fair stipend rates for parents to honor their expertise, time, and guidance, and providing translation and interpretation services. Parent and Community Champions have been continual advocates for embedding equity in our work, recognizing the role that factors such as systemic racism, prejudice, and social stigmas, which was referenced earlier, related to developmental delays and stigmas thwart families' abilities to access services for their children. Parent and Community Champions are also now a part of and are driving our equity work, which Tara will be sharing with you momentarily. Our last key learning is related to the structure and purpose of advisory councils. Help Me Grow L.A. originally had two separate advisory councils, one consisting of parents and community leaders, and the other consisting of EII system leaders, administrators, and providers. We have learned that bringing parent champions and agency representatives at the same table rather than at different spaces supports greater transparency, accountability, innovation, and power sharing. It puts parents with lived experience in the room with staff who both have the power to directly change policy and practice. In the upcoming months, and now the now combined advisory council will be informing critical efforts at First 5 L.A. and L.A. County Department of Public Health. Next, I'll invite Tara to share about our team's work towards advancing equity through Help Me Grow.
All right. Well, thank you, Melissa. So a major part of our Help Me Grow L.A. work over the past few years has been addressing inequities in access to early identification and intervention services. Families are often treated differently when accessing services, and therefore, quality and access to services are different based on characteristics such as race, ethnicity, geography, and language due to structural racism and marginalization. One of our key realizations early on is that without an intentional effort, Help Me Grow L.A. has the potential to reinforce these inequities. While equity has been a consideration since early on in Help Me Grow L.A. planning, the team identified that there was no direct focus or coordinated effort to advance equity. So thanks to the leadership of key staff, an internal work group was established in 2021 to build out a framework, and we committed to the following statement. Help Me Grow L.A. seeks to uplift health equity by prioritizing and partnering with communities disproportionately affected by systemic racism and other systemic barriers to ensure all parents and caregivers have access to the culturally relevant resources and tools they need to support their child's development. The following slides are now going to detail our journey of this intentional focus on advancing equity within early identification and intervention, an effort that is still very much in progress. So staff first conducted a comprehensive review of available early identification and intervention data across different domains, including screening and assessment, service areas, and quality. And our first finding was that limited disaggregated data about early intervention is publicly available, making identifying and addressing inequities challenging, a finding that has also been reinforced by external reports. The data we did find pointed to deeper disparities experienced by children of color across various dimensions of early identification and intervention. Staff particularly noted disparities in quality and access to services for Black families, bolstered by available qualitative findings. Note that some of these key data points have been included in the PowerPoint. They're in the appendix to the slides. Based on these findings, the Help Me Grow L.A. Equity Work Group adopted targeted universalism as a framework to guide our planning. This includes identifying an overarching or universal goal we are trying to achieve, followed by targeted strategies to reach that goal in communities that have historically faced greater disparities. The purpose of this approach is to focus resources where they are most needed, recognizing that when you change systems to meet the needs of families who face the greatest barriers to access, more often than not, you improve access for everyone along the way. A key step of targeted universalism is identifying who those communities of focus are. In Help Me Grow L.A.'s case, we have identified Black and African-American families as our first priority population. The selection of an initial priority population was not taken lightly. Several factors were considered, including historical context, ongoing structural racism in early childhood systems, opportunities for alignment with existing work and available data. We recognize that racism operates on multiple levels of society and functions as a root cause of racial disparities. Examples of systemic racism in healthcare include, but are not limited to, neglect, dismissal, disrespect, and trivialization of concerns. After identifying our first priority population, we expanded the Equity Work Group in 2023 to include community members and key partners from the Black and African-American community. This expanded group provides ongoing input on staff and partner trainings, community listening sessions, and strategy development. And most recently, in October of 2023, we completed two listening sessions in partnership with Westside Infant Family Network to learn more about the experience of Black African-American families who have used or attempted to use services to support their children with developmental concerns. These sessions sought to better understand families' experiences with the ultimate goal of identifying opportunities for future action. Caregivers in our listening sessions shared several common barriers and sources of support when attempting to access early intervention services. Key barriers to access include the lack of education and information provided about available services, leading parents to feel that the burden is on them to figure out how to navigate and advocate a highly complex service landscape. Poor quality of care and negative interactions with providers were also a common theme. Parents felt that they often did not get what they needed from providers and/or were not heard, seen, or respected due to their race, ethnicity, and social status. These experiences contribute to a lack of trust and understanding, which reinforces barriers to access. Conversely, we heard that connecting with other parents and caregivers is an important source of support, and that despite the challenges just shared, many caregivers still look to their primary care providers first for information about developmental concerns. These findings are nuanced, highlighting the importance of peer support and suggesting that primary care may be an important place to focus in the future as one of the most important starting places for families, yet also a place where there continue to be manifestations of systemic racism and inconsistent quality of care. Moving forward, findings will be used by the Equity Work Group to identify tactics to better support the Black African-American community. So our initial equity efforts over the past few years have yielded several important learnings about what this work requires. First, time and resources. Three years in, we are just getting started. A great deal of foundation setting was required to get where we are today. Adequate time and resources are needed to foster growth. Learning and healing is pivotal to engaging in equity work and to ensuring that community can meaningfully participate. Second, advancing equity is a vulnerable process that requires deep reflection on a personal, interpersonal, and systemic level, all in parallel. Progress cannot be made without doing that internal work to walk the talk. And lastly, we want to elevate what we are hearing from community. Community members are often called upon to give information, sometimes having to recount harmful experiences. When no follow-up action occurs, it feels like this emotional labor was wasted, eroding any trust that was built. Action is very much needed. And moving forward, our group is committed and excited to engage. In the next phase of our work, the Equity Work Group will be developing community-specific strategy recommendations to ensure more equitable access and quality of early identification and intervention services for Black and African-American families in L.A. County. So you've now heard data and learnings that have risen out of select strands of Help Me Grow L.A. That was the first part of the presentation. So we'd like to conclude with a consolidation that really speaks to overarching learnings across all areas. And we're going to start with the importance of having parents with lived experience in leadership and staff roles. Since early on in Help Me Grow L.A., parent and community champions have been a part of our advisory council and played a vital role in ensuring that the work we do in Help Me Grow L.A. is relevant to families. This applies from communication materials, which Melissa highlighted, to the actual structure of our programs. And from the beginning, one thing we have heard most from our parent and community champions is the importance of peer and community supports for early intervention. This includes trained parent-peer support specialists, community health workers, and others who not only provide assistance navigating a very complex service landscape, but who can also provide emotional support and empathy from their own journey. Importantly, for these supports to be most effective, they should also be congruent in language and culture, and this is something also supported by research. While these types of supports do exist in L.A. County, availability is not sufficient to meet demand or to meet the needs of L.A. County's culturally diverse families. Our third finding relates to medical providers, which are a critical partner for early identification and intervention. They are where a majority of families turn to first for advice and often the primary source of screening or front door into services. However, grantees across several projects shared that medical providers screen inconsistently. They often do not have supportive conversations around screening results when they do, and they lack knowledge of available community resources to support families when a delay is identified. Next, we have learned that individual regional centers, who are the primary public source of service coordination and support for individuals with developmental delays or disabilities and their families, they are working hard to strengthen access to families through technological improvements, outreach, reducing their caseloads, and more. However, referral and intake protocols still vary widely across L.A. County's seven regional centers, which are each independently managed. This lack of standardization makes navigating services across L.A. County challenging for families and caregivers. Across our work, we have learned that publicly available data on the quality of early intervention services remains limited, and particularly data disaggregated by race, ethnicity, language, geography, and other factors that would make it possible to hone in on and address disparities in quality. An additional learning primarily shared through input from our pathways partners is that the early identification and intervention workforce in L.A. County is currently insufficient to meet the need. This includes pediatricians, regional center service coordinators, physical therapists, occupational therapists, mental and behavioral health specialists, community health workers. For example, while Department of Developmental Services recently mandated that regional centers reduce their caseloads and provided funding to do that, hiring has remained a challenge. And lastly, from our work on the centralized access point, we have learned that families benefit from a way to access resources that are centrally located, standardized, and easy to follow. The early intervention services landscape in L.A. County is extremely complex. Navigating the different eligibility criteria, the service area boundaries, and the requirements is challenging even for a trained professional, and it's often overwhelming for families. Having a single entry point for families where families can go, ask any question that they have, and also receive direction on where to start has incredible value. We know that these overarching learnings are a lot to process. Likely, none of this is new information to those of you that work in service delivery, in prevention, or in early intervention, but we did want to provide this comprehensive review as it holds a lot of potential as we think through the future of Help Me Grow L.A. and as First 5 L.A. moves into implementation, planning, and tactic development. So for this next and final segment, we're going to discuss, so what's next? How and where does this effort continue? What is Department of Public Health and First 5 L.A.'s role in that future? And I'm going to pass it back to Dr. Franklin to share the latest from DPH.
Sorry. Thank you. I feel like I need to say, there is hope.
There is.
And it's in this room and outside these doors and in the wisdom of those with lived experience who have been informing us on our journey. Many of you know I'm a parent of two premies born three years apart. Both required physical therapy. My oldest accepted into a regional center and home visitation, which was game changer. My youngest was denied services, and so I had to leave my job to continue her on her journey of development, which wasn't enough, and I had to leave my another job here to continue her journey, and she's doing great now. But it's disappointing to see that still that's a challenge, you know, that our parents face and how game changer this work is. We believe in the value of early identification and intervention, the utility of our online service locator tool, the power of individuals with lived experience both stretching our systems and locking arms with parents and families who face barriers to accessing EII services as they care for their child, all while reducing parent stress and increasing household well-being. With that belief, as our driving force, we are proactively seeking funding to support elements of Help Me Grow L.A., including the staffing of family partners. We are thrilled to receive a grant from the Office of Child Protection in the coming year, as well as leveraging unspent funds from Pritzker Systems Building Grant. In the meantime, we're working to expand training, including obtaining community health worker certification for staff that supports both their personal and professional development and also long-term sustainability efforts of Help Me Grow L.A. The family partners' work, of course, supports services provided to clients, but also community partnerships through work with our regionally-based community public health teams, or CPHTs, who are charged with forming coalitions in every spa to work on initiatives identified by community members within each spa. Beyond Help Me Grow L.A., the opportunity to continue to elevate EII will be front and center during MCH's, during our Title V Needs Assessment, a process which includes input from stakeholders across L.A. County, including community members and organizations we have engaged so deeply for the past five years in this space. The data collected will inform MCH's Title V Work Plan, which includes entire sections on children and youth with special healthcare needs, language on Help Me Grow, healthcare navigation supports for families, and other key program activities that support early identification and intervention. L.A. County Department of Public Health's MCH will be coordinating with internal and external programs to complete the needs assessment, including with our colleagues in Children's Medical Services. But I'm also sure many of you in this room will have the opportunity to weigh in during the needs assessment process, and that's where we define our priorities as accountability to the state. Most recently, we've made concrete efforts to build out referrals to and from our home visiting partners who do conduct ESQs, so ages, ages, excuse me, ASQ, ages and stages screenings. So early identification and intervention screenings are done by our home visiting program, NFP, HFA, PAT, and we're working to improve how those families can be supported and navigated as it relates to Help Me Grow. But also our CHOY healthcare navigation agencies, the newly-formed DPH Info Line, our Childhood Led Poisoning Prevention Program, or CLIP, the African-American Infant and Maternal Mortality Prevention Initiative DULA program, and other opportunities for cross or bidirectional referrals to support community members that come into contact with services provided by DPH. All of this can be run through our centralized access point team, and we welcome additional partners that can support families with children that need extra support anywhere here in L.A. County. I'll now pass it to Tara.
So for First 5 L.A., this next fiscal year, 2425, does reflect our final year of direct support of Help Me Grow L.A. Our strategic partnership with Department of Public Health does end in June of '24. This year, we will continue to support the L.A. Care Partnership, our Wave 2 Help Me Grow L.A. Pathways, the Advisory Council, and the communication efforts through June of 2025. And given this, we also will remain as thought partners this next year with L.A. County Department of Public Health and others as Help Me Grow L.A.'s future continues to unfold and the work evolves. We see important potential in utilizing Help Me Grow's learning and data, the relationships established, the infrastructure built that will remain past our funding to help develop tactics through First 5 L.A. Strategic Plan implementation that will continue to support early identification and intervention. As noted here, we are committed to early identification and intervention in our new strategic plan, given Goal 3, Objective 2, which is focused on increasing the annual percent of children prenatal to five in L.A. County with a developmental delay receiving early intervention services by 2029. So our focus, our leadership, our commitment to community and partnership will continue in support of early identification in our new strategic plan. But how? What will that look like, is the question we would love to hear more from each of you So we want to thank you, Board, for staying with us, for your time and attention, all your incredible questions at the first part. As we open this up for discussion, we wanted to conclude by recapping and reminding each of you of our lessons learned, now grouped by themes, which are: community voice and equity, early intervention access and quality, and system accountability and capacity. These are the areas that we think offer opportunities for continued work over the next year and beyond as we move into tactic development. These are all big lifts, as you read each of these rightly, and likely, it goes without saying, but require close partnership with parents and systems to be effective. Where and how can First 5 L.A. add the greatest value? And what's our unique role is what we'd like to hear more from all of you. So we have kind of these questions posed. As you're processing the overarching learning and thinking through everything you heard tied to the work that's been done and developed through Help Me Grow L.A., any reactions to those overarching learnings? How do these learnings help inform tactics? And now, we have presenters, and the next item, they're going to get into tactic development a little bit more, but it's coming. We're in that stage right now with implementation planning. We need to think about what are the tactics that we're going to commit to as part of our strategic plan. And we've committed to roles in our new strategic plan, right there here: connector, convener, thought partner, and advocate. How do you see us fulfilling those roles within the area of early identification and intervention informed by the learning that we've just walked you all through? So I'll pass it back to all of you. And thank you again.
Thank you, guys. There's so much I love about all this work, particularly the community-based collaborative nature. I come from child welfare, so I always want to say lived experience, but community resident, right? And that's sort of my, what I've been thinking as you've been talking about this, because there's so many wonderful learnings and there's so much, so many relationships built already around early intervention. And in many ways, across the county, we're trying to develop exactly those same things in other service arenas, right? So there's the whole Families First Prevention Services Act, there's CalAAM, you know, you name it, the systems changes that are going on at the same time. And I just, it just feels like maybe we can think about how to share these learnings. I'm sure you already are, but more broadly, across these other thought groups that are in very active conversations right now, right? So how do we put the pieces together? How do we align our work? How do we? And it's not different communities, and it's not different locations, and in some ways, it's not even different players, and it's not different families. So how do we, you know, make those? And I say that knowing how hard it is to do even with one piece of the pie. It just feels like we should think about how do we sort of bring these learnings to some of those other conversations and vice versa.
Yeah, that's great. We would love to hear more on recommendations. Where are those tables and where you think we can offer, you know, the learnings and certainly be connecting more directly and intentionally to those efforts.
So I know you've heard about this, but just one specific example is through the Families First Prevention Services Act, through our community plan, through the part of it that's about the families who have not yet touched DCFS. We're doing a number of pilot tests, and one of them, which I think is really, really interesting, is in the valley, and it's about collaboration between childcare, home visiting, and Help Me Grow specifically. So starting with the subsidized childcare population and asking parents who are known to the Resource and Referral Agency in that area, which is CCRC, and asking parents who's interested in home visiting and Help Me Grow. It's a new pilot project, but it's one that's potentially really interesting because there, you know, as I say, there are a lot of experiments going on throughout the county with different systems, and this particular one is one that's trying purposely to figure out how we make the connections.
Yep. That's a really perfect example.
I appreciated the whole presentation, but especially the equity section. So I think we have a lot to learn from that, and I'm interested in your outcomes in that as well. I think as separate agencies, it's very important that we have an overarching kind of view of the changing populations, including immigrants and, you know, other groups, unhoused groups, and that. So I think that your data is going to be rich for us in terms of a learning opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you for this presentation, the second half of it, and just the work that you're doing to really understand these issues and create opportunities to expand it, even while we're looking at the structure of it changing. But to Commissioner McCroskey's point, I actually was thinking about the touchpoints that are already there with the significant portion of Black families being still overrepresented with DCFS and having mandated parenting classes. And I know that you've mentioned before that the model is to move away from mandated reporter to mandated supporter, and still providing those opportunities for families who are part of the system to be educated through parenting mandated parenting classes. Maybe a policy shift would be to include early intervention and support in that curriculum, not as a way of saying this is something that we are assuming is the problem, but to say, we don't believe you're a bad parent. We don't think your child is a problem child. There may be this other undiagnosed concern that, or delay, that we can look at. And so I don't know if that's something that DCFS is looking at, but I think that that's an opportunity to bridge that because we know that Black families do tend to parent in isolation and for many reasons. But if the front door is the medical provider and they don't feel like, and we know from the data, they don't feel like they're going to be seen or heard there, that stigma, they're definitely going to resist when they're being told by a medical doctor, something's possibly wrong with your baby, as opposed to someone who's providing tools that they can use with, through like a parenting class, where they're saying, look for these other factors. Maybe this is what's going on, and it's, you know, it's not that you're failing as a parent. Your baby isn't able to communicate with you, and these are some tools that we can help you with.
I love that recommendation and believe that that's something that we can build in now. I mean, we're actively having those prevention conversations as part of the countywide collaboratives around mandated supporter and all the other connected efforts. I think that's something that's doable now, make happen now, make folks aware. Now, we don't have to wait till something is mandated for us to do, so thank you for that.
Right. And for the, I don't know how the county determines the curriculum that's approved for mandated parenting. I know there are services, independent, I'm actually, I've taught parenting classes but through a clinic, and we had a court-approved curriculum that we would teach, but it didn't touch at all on developmental delays as far as like what you can recognize in your child or how you can provide them support. So maybe through the courts and whoever approves the curriculum that these independent providers are teaching. And even in group homes, many of the families that I've worked with are in group homes who are women who are formerly incarcerated but still in custody, and they may not know the first thing to look for when it comes to this. And in that environment, it's high stress, no matter how much they want to come out and be the best parent, when you are struggling to understand your baby and why they're not hitting those milestones that insecurity in parenting sets in and can lead to really poor decisions. And so how can we get in earlier if we know that Black families are already interacting with the system in that way? Thank you.
Again, I've been so enlightened, and I think that even for me, as I shared my own experience and hearing you, Dr. Franklin, talk about your experience, and I think it's safe to say that we have resources at our disposal to some degree in ways that many low-income working families do not. And if this was overwhelming for us, I mean, the statistic you shared that families on average are spending 14 hours a week. average are spending 14 hours a week, a lot of families just don't have a luxury. And so I wonder if there's something that we can do on the legislative side or on the advocacy side to lift this up, because one in six is very significant. If there are potential policies or at the local level, at the state level, that we can advocate for that protect parents, because, you know, even our guaranteed income program, I'm sure the same with the county's program, we have so many women especially that said that they had to leave their job because their children have a learning disability, a physical disability, and their employers just did not give them the support that they needed. And so they've had to make this choice, and I just think that there's just fundamentally, something fundamentally wrong with that. So I just, I don't know what the answer is, but I think that I would like to explore on the advocacy side, on the legislative side potentially, what can be done to pursue this and add some additional protections for families.
Question. The two parent-led groups you mentioned were done at Westside Regional?
The first parent-led group is our advisory council. We started Help Me Grow with a systems leaders council and then a parent-led council, and then quickly realizing, why are we keeping these separate? Why don't we, why can't we bring the system leaders and the parents together? That is now one council that is continuing to advise and guide Help Me Grow and is influenced and informed and guided and helps structure and develop our work. So that's the one parent participating-led council. And then we have a equity work group that was expanded initially was just First 5 LA and DPH staff, and then we expanded that to parents as well, realizing we need that parent perspective, that expertise, to expand this group, and so that, those are the two parent groups we discussed.
Okay, maybe I'm misunderstood, or I'm talking about something else. There was a slide you talked about two convenings. Is that, say it again?
Oh, Westside Infant Network was the consultant team that supported our equity work.
Got you. For the listening sessions, okay, because I heard Westside Regional, and I thought, why there versus Sklar?
Yes.
Who you're targeting. So I was all.
It's okay, Westside, I've said Regional Center a number of times.
Thank you. All right. Because the other issue that came up for me as I went down that rabbit hole, clearly by myself, was the real issue around quality between, within the Regional Center setting, which has been an issue long discussed and a challenge, and the quality of the services received by families within the Regional Center setting. So as you talk about policy, that's an area that we've attempted to course correct for four decades, and I'm not convinced that we got it right. Yes, Commissioner?
Thank you again for all your really, really important and thoughtful work. I haven't heard you talk, I don't think, about DHS. And I wonder, you know, you talked about the health plan, but how does DHS fit in, particularly as we look ahead? You're looking for funding, you're trying to fit into a whole communications network. My understanding is DHS is trying to create a referral system, as are, I think, each of the county departments. And, you know, you have navigation, referral as so much a part of what you're trying to address, and DHS, I believe, is doing that on some levels. Are they a potential partner going forward? Or how does DPH, is that the right way to interact for this project to see? Maybe they have a solution.
I can start. We have had engagement with DHS. Their head of pediatrics is on our advisory council. We have also had projects over the years with DHS. They have a SHARC clinic, Strong, Healthy, and Resilient Kids, which is housed out of Rancho Los Amigos. And so we had a partnership, a grant, a contract with DHS for the last several years. It actually just ended at the beginning of this fiscal year, to build out their referral and linkage specifically tied to screening and early intervention and building out those community connections and enhancing, and then taking that learning to inform a lot of the work we were doing at the centralized access point. So they have, we have stayed connected. I don't know beyond, like other, it seems like you're referring maybe to efforts outside of that particular clinic. I mean, it is one clinic, and it only has, you know, so much capacity and the families it can serve. But we have had a lot of engagement with DHS. They have been a part of the work, and that kind of learning and sharing and, you know, what they're doing with their referral linkage as it ties to EII. But maybe you are aware of other efforts.
Yeah, I think we can definitely learn from some of their work. I think the challenge with DHS, Department of Health Services, is their impaneled patients are really their population of focus, which is about 750,000 residents of the county. And so I think the challenge for us, for DPH and other partners or other county agencies is our population is much larger to serve. So I think while we can learn from them, we have a different population, a much broader population of focus, and a much more fragmented system to then refer them to.
I can just add also that we are a partner in DHS's ACE's network of care. Yeah, I think that's, yeah, that's okay. And they have a web-based tool that they use to refer, and we're a partner in that. And so every day we get referrals from DHS for clients that need Help Me Grow services.
Okay. Yeah, I was actually thinking that ACE's network, so that's great that you're.
Before I go to Carla to kind of do a wrap-up, as I look at the two questions, are you getting what you need from us in response to the two questions you posed?
Yeah, there's been some great examples or ideas around advocacy and efforts there. I heard about, yeah, connecting and convening some of the key county systems that are in this work. So yeah, I think we're getting there. There's a lot more to come. I know this is just a start.
Carla?
And I was actually going to say thank you to our presenters, Dr. Franklin, Mr. Baldwin. The idea of partnering with the system in this way is exactly the type of partnership that we will continue to explore, so just lots of gratitude. And of course, Tara, for leading this work for over six years. But the reason I wanted to make a comment is this is exactly the type of feedback that's really, really helpful from the board. So as we are moving to our new strategic plan and narrowing in on the tactics, what we heard really, really clearly from this discussion is three areas for us to focus on as we think about early intervention and what it will look like. One, we really, we heard clearly, share these learnings, share them widely, let's figure out what partners to work with. Two, a lot of discussion on professional development opportunities with LEAs, and Laco has offered here some of the work that's already happening with LEAs. But there are children transition from sort of Regional Center to LEAs, and UT, Universal Transitional Kindergarten came up. And as Tara mentioned really clearly, we're hearing policy, explore policy opportunities. So this discussion will inform our tactics, and our next presenters will be covering that. But that's the type of input that's really helpful as we look at what rightsizing some of our investments, given fiscal reality looks like. So appreciation to the board and our presenters for being able to let us have that discussion.
Yes.
This is daunting, and it's really challenging, so thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to throw in, or maybe a comment on something Summer actually mentioned, but it has to do with incarcerated parents, particularly mothers who are incarcerated. We have a program now for visitation with incarcerated mothers with their children and are trying to establish one with dads incarcerated. And that's been extremely complicated, but hopefully will come. It also ties back to my question about who can make these referrals. Does it have to be a parent? Or can it be a concerned, interested party? Again, this population is larger than we like for it to be, the population of incarcerated parents, but there are little kids that maybe don't see their parents much, or they do visit, but it's not the kind of environment where there's going to be any in-depth planning for the care of the child. It's more or less focusing on the incarcerated parent and them being able to see their child, and some interaction that does end up being positive. So just to throw out the, you know, the population that I don't want us to forget about.
Here, here. Thank you for that. Let's open it up for public comment.
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Thank you very much. Thank you again for the information. Appreciate it. Let's move on to agenda item eight, that our vice chair is going to lead us in, and that's the strategic plan update. It might help if I put these glasses on. We're going to hear from our consultants, I believe.
They'll be polled online.
Oh, they're going to be virtual. Okay. Yes, and we've been joined by a little one.
Hi, Chrissy. Hi. Hi, everyone.
Hello, hello, and welcome.
Well, hello. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I will, good afternoon, board members, executive director, Platas, and attendees. It feels great to be here again, ready to assist you in this next part of the journey of implementing the strategic plan. My name is Rigo Rodriguez for the public, and I'm here with my colleague who will present not only herself, but also someone that's joining us.
Hi, everyone. I'm Chrissy Castro, working on the end of the strategic plan. And this is me, when I first came in front of the board, I had shared he had just taken his first step, and now he's in form, and yeah.
Well, hi, Jace. Well, for obvious reasons, I will be giving the presentation today with the team backing us up, so. And if at any point in my presentation there is a glitch in communication, just, you know, please stop me. And our purpose today for being here with you is to review a general milestone calendar of the journey we trust will enable First 5 LA to develop the best tactics to implement the First 5 LA strategic plan that goes from '24 to '29. And I am so glad that our presentation comes right after this presentation that you just heard on Help Me Grow and that Tara and others did a wonderful job on, because I think finding the right tactics is largely about engaging the community, policy, and systems leaders who already have deep insights on the kinds of policies and systems changes that will help generate the results that are called for in the strategic plan. So again, I'm so glad that in some ways the kinds of conversations we envision were just modeled. And in fact, the same leaders that we want to engage are also at the heart of building and expanding a social movement that will elevate the needs of children prenatal to age five and their families. And so our agenda today is very brief. I think we only have about 20 minutes, so we're going to start off with a very, very high-level review of the strategic plan. We know that you're very familiar with the plan. We just want to make sure that members of the public that join us have a narrative, a storyline to connect with. Then after, we'll review the milestone calendar, and then we'll be open for questions. Please know that this is really just an opening kind of overview, and we look forward to engaging you in more detail and interactive sessions in the future. So in terms of the brief review for the strategic plan, this is where we left off in November with you. And for those of you who are new to this plan, it has a new vision and mission statement. The vision is a future where every child is born healthy and thrives in a nurturing and safe and loving community. And the mission really emphasizes advocacy for children and their families, amplifying community voices, and partnering for collective impact so that every child in LA County reaches their full developmental potential. So that's the, you know, core mission and vision. And then the values that you also adopted focus on impact, equity, partnership, and integrity. Impact is about the lasting results you want to achieve. Equity is about dismantling those systemic barriers that you also heard about in the last presentation, while also vigorously advancing racial justice in the process. And then partnership is about that commitment to collective action, knowing that First 5 LA can only achieve these results in partnership with these wonderful organizations and communities. And then integrity really emphasizes being accountable to results, but also to our actions being congruent with our values. So that's the first part of the strategic plan, these mission, vision, and values. The second part of the strategic plan is your goals, objectives, strategies, and tactics. And your goals really focus on three areas, meeting those basic needs of children prenatal to age five and their families, ensuring that children prenatal to age five have nurturing relationships and environments, and that they also have a solid foundation for well-being, lifelong learning, and success. So those are the three driving goals of the strategic plan. And we have three measurable objectives for each of these goals. I'm not going to go into them each because of the limited time that we have, but I just want to emphasize that these objectives are designed to be measurable and will tell us over time how we're doing, you know, hence the accountability element there. Now, to be able to impact and achieve these objectives, the strategic plan identifies three overarching strategies, and that begins with catalyzing public policy efforts. And in the last presentation, I heard a number of real policy opportunities, and so we want to focus on those. The other strategy is making sure that we're strengthening public systems, services, and supports. And I heard board member McCroskey mention the child welfare system, for example, and like really making sure that we're strengthening those public systems, services, and supports. And then the third strategy is to really ensure that throughout this process, First 5 LA is supporting the growth of a social movement that really elevates the needs of this population and community. And again, the last presentation really highlighted the importance of making sure that we include those relationships that are already in place, as board member McCroskey mentioned. We know who the actors are, and through them, there's a lot of knowledge there. So this brings us to tactics, and the tactics are these organized, oops. Can you, I just noticed that the slides changed.
Rigo, give us one moment. We're just going to transition the slides for you internally so that they're clear for everyone to view.
Okay. Okay. So here, I want to go a little bit slower because this is where we left off last time, and basically want to underscore that tactics are concrete and well-organized activities like projects, programs, initiatives, that really focus on these policy changes, systems changes. we left off last time, and basically want to underscore that tactics are concrete and well-organized activities, like projects, programs, initiatives, that really focus on these policy changes, systems changes, community mobilization, that aim to achieve one or more of your measurable objectives, right? So those are the, these tactics is what we're going to identify together over the course of this year, and that's what we'll present the general calendar on in a second. And I want to point out that there were three universal parameters that you also adopted to help guide the selection of the tactics, and these are alignment and potential impact. You know, basically making sure that the tactics need to be aligned to the goals and that there is a nexus to the objectives, right? That whatever we do has some way of connecting to those objectives that you want to achieve. The second parameter is that we use an equity-driven planning process. And essentially, that means making sure that we involve community, policy, and systems leaders in the identification of those tactics that are high potential. And then thirdly, the cost-benefit and sustainability parameter. And that basically means that whatever tactics are selected and the resources that are needed, they need to take into account your financial capacity, realities, and so forth. And so if you go to the next slide to kind of conclude, this is how a goals, objectives, and strategies all hang together. And again, they're all in a framework. So let's go over to the next slide. All right. So what I'd like to do here is just go briefly over the milestone calendar and how we're proposing to do this. And, you know, our role this year is to work with First 5 LA, again, to engage those important community, policy, and systems leaders to, again, identify the right and best tactics. And the arc that we are proposing goes through three phases. From now till the end of April, we want to really engage your leadership and staff internally, and that basically is, the intent of that is to make sure that the internal team has a shared and very coherent and tight approach to engaging community, policy, and systems leaders. We're going to focus on three key tasks here. One is make sure we're preparing the data, all the sources are in place, baselines, or at least the best that we can do with the data, disaggregating the data where possible, doing analysis and things like that around the objectives in particular. We want to make sure that we engage as many of the staff within First 5 LA, because there's a lot of knowledge there, relationships, insights, and so forth. And then really dedicate the time in March and April to start calendaring those sessions and engagements with the key stakeholders. So start doing that March and April. And then the second phase will kick in right after that. I want to say that the calendaring and the identification of stakeholders is something that will also come back to you, because we want to make sure that we also learn from you about who we need to, who the organization needs to engage around the various objectives and goals. The second phase is from May through July and August, and there we want to very intentionally convene clusters of folks around goals and specific objectives, so that folks that are doing work within a specific objective or goal are convened, or we may go out to them and really continue to do the work that you just heard in the earlier presentation. So, you know, around meeting basic needs, nurturing relationships and environments, the solid foundation for well-being and so forth. Examples of the kinds of questions that we want to pose are things like what policy or systems changes are needed to achieve a specific objective? What opportunities or challenges do they see in the current context or future horizon that to achieve these policy or systems changes? What priorities would they give to these opportunities? And then the kinds of tactics that will help achieve those policy and systems changes. And of course, throughout this whole process, we want to make sure that we're identifying and weaving together the networks that will be critical to implementing the tactics. The third phase would begin sometime in September, and in that phase, from September to October, is where we want to finalize the tactics and make sure that we go back, make sure that sometime between July, August, and September, not only do we engage the community once, but July, August, and September, we're coming back to the communities that we engaged in the earlier part to validate that what we heard is what they said, and then out of that, even present to them some initial priorities for their feedback. So really using from April through August and September to do that deep engagement that we didn't have a lot of time to do in this first iteration of the strategic planning process. So that basically concludes the kind of overview of the milestone calendar. Let me see if my colleague Chrissy wants to add anything else before we open it up for questions.
No, you've summarized that perfectly. Thank you, Rigo.
Okay. So any questions on the overview?
Commissioner McCroskey?
Thank you. That was very clear and very quick. So I have a question about the objectives. You won't be surprised, because that's the, my, I don't really see the alignment of the objectives as clearly as the other pieces of the plan. So I really have a question for you. I know these are aspirational, the measures specifically are aspirational, but I'm assuming they're also will be translated into basically our accountability framework, right? Is that right? So we'll measure ourselves on the answers to these measures and the changes between now and 2029, right?
Yes. And just to be clear on my end, and then I'll see if Chrissy has another thought on this. Another thing that we want to do during this engagement, Board Member McCroskey, is to also elevate the kinds of outcomes and performance measures that folks really feel have a nexus to the objectives. And so it's there that we want to translate the objectives and the, as you call them, aspirational, because these are population-level measures or indicators, right?
Right.
So when the tactics are defined, we also want to be clear about the outcome or outcomes and the performance measures associated with those outcomes, right? So we will need to do that as part of the kind of tactic development. I'm wondering if that clarified it, or Chrissy, if you want to add anything else, or if you needed like an example, just let me know.
I have another part to the question. Chrissy, do you want to say anything before I get to the next, or wait?
No, you can ask your question.
Okay. Because a lot of this work is already underway, not by First 5 alone, for sure, and some of it not by First 5 at all. And so I just want to make sure that we're building into this year, the opportunity not only for staff to directly interact with some of what's going on here, but for commissioners to directly interact with some of what's going on here. I'm feeling urgent about this one in particular right now, because one of the indicators that we talked about had to do with increasing participation in subsidized childcare and a mixed delivery system, right? It's 3.1. And I was just at a policy roundtable meeting yesterday. I know we have some participation, but Alejandra isn't here today. And some of what's going on is very, very urgent, but it's not directly in alignment with this indicator. The state budget decreases that we're expecting are very severe, and the transition to a mixed delivery system with TK is slow. And so I just hope that we're going to have an opportunity for real, you know, thought collabora, thought partnership, right? Not just like, what's the measure and how do you do it, but thought partnership about who's doing what, and what is it that we can do that help the efforts that are already underway as well?
Yeah, yeah. Board Member McCroskey, I'm hearing two things. And the first is the importance of knowing what's underway, whether or not First 5 LA is leading it. And so I think in this first stage, March and April, we want to be able to make sure that we hear from you all as board members, from First 5 LA staff and any others around what is going on out there. And in that same process, we will also track urgency as well. Like some of these are very urgent in terms of, you know, the ship has sailed, right? Or others are within the next three months and so forth. So we want to start mapping that out. So that's that first part, where we definitely would like to make sure that you, as the board members, are involved in that effort. There is a second part that I'm also hearing, and I don't have an answer for you on that, but I'm hearing it, and that is the kind of what role should the board members play in the thought partnership as the conversation is happening around the tactics? That's the second thing I'm hearing, the desire to be really involved in that thought partnership, in the design or development of the tactics. Is that correct?
That's great. You heard both parts of it probably more clearly than I said them, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. And Chrissy, did you want to add anything else?
No, just that at the population level, we're 100% in agreement that it's not First 5 alone, but it's really the aligned contributions across communities, across systems, across lots of stakeholders, that's really going to help impact those objectives. And that really, what we're wanting to do is talk about accountability on two levels. It's a population-level accountability, which First 5 is a contributor to, but not the sole person responsible, entity responsible for. But at the level of tactics, that's where there's a more defined set of, you know, outcomes, parameters, what we call performance measures, that will be directly connected to the specific efforts of the tactics of First 5. I also have to say that I have a 19-month-old, and our childcare provider called in today, and he's been with me at work all day, and definitely have so much love and respect for parents that had, you know, young children during the pandemic. It's amazing that they were, you know, playing these dual functions. So also, you know, apologize that my attention is halfway here, but I'm really happy to be in the conversation.
Thank you, Chrissy. I think that's a good reminder of why we do what we do and why we're all here. So thank you. I know there's a question from Commissioner Tilton.
Yes, thank you so much. This was a lot of work, piecing this all together. I really appreciate it. I want to comment on your goal one and your first objective. I'm thrilled that we're focusing on preventing child deaths. It's something that we've been studying and keeping track of for many years. It is interesting, I guess I, I'm not sure I know why we're just focusing on under one in this particular category, the causes of child deaths under age one instead of zero to five. Deaths of children under one basically are congenital anomalies, unsafe sleep, maternal substance abuse, neglect, child abuse neglect. They're not difficult, it's not a broad spectrum of reasons, because they're not climbing into the swimming pool, they're not driving cars, they're not, they're not as prone to some accidents. They are, they are killed in automobile accidents as a passenger, but they're not usually actually mostly in car seats that are maybe unsafe that we should talk about. So this is something, obviously, we would want to partner with you on. It's something that we have an abundance of historical and current information on. And again, I can't believe I left out home visiting as the means by which we can impact deaths of children under one. So how do we do that? Specifically, when we have, this also includes other agencies and DCFS, of course, but as I said, right away, deaths of children under one, prematurity, substance abuse, and unsafe sleep, prenatal care. So how do we work together on that?
Again, I'm, I heard a question, and then I heard another question, so let me see if I'm tracking it. So one question is, why did we select children under one year old as part of the objective? So that's question one. And then question two is, how do we actually reduce the deaths for children under one, right? So let me start off with the second question first. And this is what we're planning to do over the course of the, you know, next six, seven months, is to identify those community, policy, and systems leaders that are playing a role in addressing that particular issue. And when we convene them, we want to know, what are you doing already, and what are the kinds of strategies that you think will really impact that particular objective? So the convening process is what we're going to use to generate not only ideas, but also prioritize those high-potential policy and systems change efforts, together with those stakeholders, so that First 5 LA is part of that, but also bringing in the people who are closest to the ground on that issue. So that's how we're proposing in this general milestone calendar to achieve that. Let me see if that makes sense, or if I'm communicating it clearly.
I also want to throw in, mental health is a huge player in this as well.
Yes.
Particularly with postnatal depression.
Exactly, exactly. So being able to ask you and others on the board, like, who should we invite to these meetings, will be really critical, so that we have the right set of people around the table, really letting us know what has worked, what hasn't, but with an emphasis on policy and systems changes that need to occur in order for us to see movement on that objective. For Executive Director Plaitis, I don't know.
I'm happy to respond to the first one, as to how we selected the objective. So we looked at data, shared some data here, and infant mortality was one of the things that really moved the commission, and how horrible it is, and how awful it is for particular populations. So in getting feedback, infant mortality rose to the top as one of the objectives that we want to contribute to.
Well, I'm happy.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted, so I'm, you know, we're seeing really that the planning process will be equity-driven. I just also, I think the tactics are a good opportunity to make sure, like, our measures of success really reflect, like, closing gaps in disproportionality. Because like, it's not, it's not in the, you know, in the objectives, we're just saying reduce, increase, increase, right? So I just want to highlight that I think the tactics are a great opportunity to say, like, like, reduce, unstart, especially in this, you know, we're talking about an era of resource scarcity, where we have to be really thoughtful about where we're putting our investments. And so let's think about, like, disproportionality as, like, really the first place to start, and then we'll see, you know, improvements across the board from there. So I just wanted to highlight that when we get to the tactics piece. Not just equity in terms of, like, who's at the table deciding, but like, let's reflect equity in the outcomes.
Yeah, yes, yes. And so equity is a lens that cuts across any and all activities and analyses, for sure, both in terms of who gets convened for these discussions, as well as in the analysis of data. So when we disaggregate the data, that disaggregation enables us to see disparities and disproportionality. And depending on the data source, we can also geocode it and figure out spatially where that need is concentrated to. It depends on the quality of the data and the type of data points that we have. But certainly, the disaggregation and the disproportionality enable us then to do targeted kind of analysis around the kinds of policies and systems that are, that are contributing to those disproportionality and disparities. to those disproportionality and disparities. And then to be able to think about what, what are the kinds of policies and systems changes that we need to enact in order to reduce those disproportionality with specific populations? So definitely, that will be part of the design of the tactics.
Are there any other commissioners with questions?
I actually, I, I have a question because policy has come up a lot, and I'm wondering if in the final phase with the tactics, we're looking at using this information from the stakeholder engagement to inform and refine. Now, it's like, I'm distracted. Such a sweet baby. But to inform and refine our policy agenda, and in that process, to I think Commissioner McCroskey's point, through that policy agenda, identify ways commissioners representing different parts of policy, legislation, policymakers can know from that point how we can engage and move from it just being a policy agenda to legislation that we're seeing passed.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You, you stated exactly where, what the intention is, and I think one way to really achieve that is through constant feedback loops, kind of like what we did in the strategic planning process where we are regularly presenting to the board, having sessions that are, that involve analysis, feedback, and so forth with the board. So those kinds of feedback loops that are plugged into the process can help us make sure that you're critical in the thought partnership around, around the, what that policy agenda would look like, what that systems change agenda would look like. And I would also say that with respect to involving communities to inform the policy agenda, definitely, and also making sure that community members and leaders are involved in the prioritizing of the policy agenda and advancing the policy agenda, right? So that there's, there, we want to make sure that there's a feedback loop with community, policy, and systems leaders for that, too. But the other thing is that you all are plugged into really important institutions, and so we see you as these valuable, incredible bridges to the institutions and systems that you are already very familiar with. So you are, I, Jace, I love you. I, I'm just like, oh. So, yeah. So, yeah, so I think that's, you, you stated exactly where we want to go with this, and just it's, it's the planning process that keeps the, all the different parts of this effort connected, that we want to make sure happens.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? No? Are there public comments?
Confirming there are no public comments on this item.
Okay. I want to conclude the agenda item if there are any lingering thoughts from our presenters.
No, I'm sorry if I wasn't muted for any part of that. I apologize for that.
You're fine.
Okay.
Chrissy, no accountability.
I know, right? Because Jace, you know, wants to be in the meeting.
I think, I think it would be great to have a child here every now and then, just to be reminded exactly why we're here, so.
Yeah, we got to, we got to, we got to involve them young. No, no more comments on my part, just, I'm just thanking you for creating this space for us to let you know what, what the vision is, and then over the course of the next couple of months, there will be much more engagement. So appreciate your, your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and I look forward to the ongoing work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am going to stick to the script for all of our sake to make sure we get up on time. I, for information, item for number nine, public comment. Do we have any public comments?
Confirming there are no general public comments for today's meeting.
Okay. Is there any business I should consider or call on before we adjourn?
Confirming there are none.
All right. Hearing none, we are now adjourned. As a reminder, we will not be meeting in the month of April. Our next regular board meeting will pick back up on Thursday, May 9th. Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.